Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Chaney?
Here.
Trustee McKnight?
Here.
Trustee Bachman is absent this evening. Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here. Tonight, we have a public hearing, and Jen, if you would please read the public notice.
Please take notice that the village board of the village of Warwick does hereby set a public hearing on the second day of May 2022, 7:30 PM at Village Hall at 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York, on proposed application for fiscal year 2023 Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. The village invites public comments and suggestions regarding projects to be considered for funding under the Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. Under this program, a variety of physical improvements, as listed below, are eligible for funding: acquisition and disposition of real property, public works, public facilities or site improvements, code enforcement, housing and health codes, clearance, demolition, and rehabilitation for public use or economic development, housing rehabilitation, loan and grants, special projects for elderly and handicapped, provision of public services, shelter clinics, senior nutrition, et cetera, payment of nonfederal shares of other grant programs, relocation payments and assistance. The village will be considering projects to be submitted to the Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. The deadline for submittal is May 31, 2022. The village board will, at the above date, time, and place, hear all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the board must be received by the board at or prior to the public hearing.
Okay. So just for the board to know, we've looked at a number of projects. This year's project, of course, as you know, is the rehabilitation or repair of the sidewalks from Third, on South Street, from Second to Third Street. And it's a rather major undertaking because of the topography of that sidewalk. And a suggestion came from two of the trustees about just continuing that work so that, you know, we start making a very clear path, since it's close to the park, and those sidewalks are in relatively rough condition, but it's a straight path, and there are, it doesn't have the technical issues that the sidewalk we're doing this year has. So that is, I think, where we're going to take it. I've walked it with Mike Moser and Dave Getz. We have a survey of that area, and so we're going to write the grant up in a way that to try to get as far as we can go is sort of the premise, the idea. I mean, maybe matching it with our funds, we can get more bang for our buck. But, and also, the plan was to start at Galloway as opposed to Third Street because the, there is no, there is just a dirt path from Lawrence Avenue to Galloway, and that would be the best place for a sidewalk at this point, you know, that would make the greatest improvement. And so that's, that's the idea that's in place now, and we're working towards. So if you want some input, this is the moment.
So can we talk again about the timing of which? So there's the work that we have, or the grant that we have for between Third and Second Street?
Yes.
And that's to take place this calendar year, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then there's the community block grant.
That's right.
Is that to take place next year, or is there some flexibility to?
No, next year. Yeah, because we won't receive approval from the county. It has to go, it has to be vetted through the county, through the Office of Community Development, then it goes to
Right.
the executive department, you know, goes through Steve Newhouse, and then eventually comes back to us. So we don't hear about this until really the fall.
So it's a continual, not continual effort in terms of workdays one after the other?
Right.
But just continue on the same path?
That's right.
So we'll be separated by conceivably months apart?
Yes, exactly, and thank you for clarifying that. That's what I, I meant. They were going in the same trajectory, but not at the same time, so. And, you know, some of the sidewalk seems salvageable, but some of it is in pretty rough shape. So that's a matter of consideration, what we have to figure out. But we also talked about not only just sidewalks, but also amenities that could be added, such as benches or, you know, along the way, and maybe that's a possibility, too. So.
Are there any permissions that we need to get from the landowners?
Not usually. I mean, usually, it's a pretty straightforward, you know, because it's their sidewalk, basically, and to eliminate anything that is potentially a hazard, I think they look at it as
Right.
as a plus.
There was a March date for, I think we sent someone to, I don't know if it was an information session for the county, or what was it?
That's, right, yes.
And then I'm just, I can't find the exact paper. This is, this is, we owe them basically a detailed response, but by June sometime, is that right?
June 24th.
June 24th, okay. Does that, now, are we able to say just as much as we can get on this road?
No, we'll give them a detail. You know, there'll be a cost per, you know, per foot, you know, so it's, but, I mean, this, it's interesting, and maybe you'd like to participate in what happens because, because they have their committee, their committee does a site visit, and they walk it, and they are making a determination on, you know, does this do what we say it's going to do? Does it eliminate any barriers for handicapped people? And so that's what they're looking at. And, you know, I think that's just, you know, another part of what happens in the process. And, you know, usually, we've been very successful with this program at this point, using handicap accessibility as kind of the cornerstone of what we're trying to do.
Got it.
Anyone else?
I'm good.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $156,928.95?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And under correspondence tonight, we have two letters from Joe Lawler, and it's signed by Joe, but also by Carmine Garitano, who is the commander of the VFW, and
Senior Vice Commander.
Senior Vice Commander, thank you. And, you know, I know, Barry, you have that big resolution in there, so Carly, I'm going to ask you if you wouldn't mind reading those letters, because just for the record, I think they're, they're really wonderful.
All right, so the first letter dated March 18. Dear Mayor Newhart, we would like to extend our appreciation to your DPW supervisor, Mike Moser, for all of his and his department's effort throughout the years for the Warwick VFW Post 4662. He has been extremely helpful and accommodating to our needs. We fully appreciate his efforts on keeping Memorial Park in such excellent shape, from installing our flag drop box to maintaining the flags and the Veterans Memorial in front of the park. His assistance in installing our signs at the monument is in such a prompt and professional manner was greatly appreciated. There's never been a problem or condition that he has not been able to address in a timely manner. He truly is an asset to your staff and our village. Please extend our sincere thanks to him for all he has done for our veterans. Sincerely, Carmine Garitano and Joe Lawler, Member, VFW Post 4662.
And I just want to add to that, you know, they described those things that we've helped them with, but also the, the garden that was created last year, which our men did the lion's share of the work to develop it, which is in the, right behind the Veterans Memorial. And I'm trying to think of the soldier that it's dedicated to, and I can't, maybe it will come to me, but, but it was just great work that they did, so.
And then the second letter, also dated March 18. Dear Mayor Newhart, it is with great pleasure that I write to inform you of the outstanding work performed by your office clerk. Reyna has been extremely helpful and efficient whenever we have contacted her regarding Veterans Affairs. She was instrumental in assisting us regarding our Veterans Day Parade in 2021. As you know, we did not have a parade in 2020 due to the COVID outbreak. In addition to that, we have had all new officers elected that were not involved in previous parades, so it was a learning experience for us. Reyna's guidance in this and other matters has been instrumental in our success to meet requirements for permits and notifications to the proper authorities. She is always helpful and courteous, and she is an asset to your staff. Sincerely, Carmine Garitano and Joe Lawler, Member, VFW Post 4662.
That's great. And then, yes, it is. And a letter also from village engineer Dave Getz to DPW supervisor Mike Moser regarding the Orchard Street Pump Station Vertical Spiral Screen Punch List and substantial date of completion. And I believe there was only one item on that punch list, so that's pretty remarkable.
And that should be able to be straightened out fairly straightforward.
Good.
Yep, it's, it's good to see a very short punch list.
Yeah, and that was a project that was a long time coming, so.
And says a lot about the contractor, Tam, as well as our engineer and Mike Moser.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Under, we have one item under discussion, but I want to hold off on it until the next meeting. It's about waiving the facility use fees and security deposits for the following entities: schools, scouts, fire department, police department, ambulance corps, and veterans organizations, because it involves our facilities use permit, and Corey was instrumental, and also Reyna were instrumental in creating that permit. And I think it would be important for, for both of them to be part of that discussion. So we'll move on to privilege of the floor, and I guess we can move on to motions, actually.
Number one. Motion to accept the notice of intent to reestablish lead agency received from the Village of Warwick Planning Board for the environmental review of the Village View Estates subdivision and site plan and consent to the Planning Board reestablishing lead agency status.
So moved.
Okay. Well, he made the motion, right?
Second.
So you're second?
Oh, my goodness.
And, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now.
Number two, resolution regarding
Sir, would that fall under my motions in the future, because it has to do with the Planning Board?
It really would, actually. We'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Well, to make up for that, do you want to do?
No, this is all Barry.
Oh, come on. Tom, where's your spirit? Okay.
Number two, resolution regarding New York, New Jersey Watershed Protection Act, HR 4677. Whereas New York Congressman Tonko has proposed the New York, New Jersey Watershed Protection Act, a unique federal investment program to authorize $50 million of federal funds to protect and restore all watersheds, including the Hudson River watershed that flow into New York, New Jersey harbor. And whereas the act has unanimous support among the Hudson Valley's congressional delegation, and whereas the act would provide benefits to diverse stakeholders, such as the protection of fisheries and wildlife, conservation of natural resources and public and private lands, critical urban green spaces, ocean and coastal resources, and various opportunities to improve the quality of life for community members throughout the region. And whereas the Village of Warwick is part of the most densely populated and economically important regions in the country, the proposed New York, New Jersey Watershed Act will provide enormous economic and environmental benefits locally, regionally, and nationally. And whereas watersheds provide drinking water, tourism, and outdoor recreation, economic opportunities, as well as sustain fisheries, critical wildlife, and provide vital infrastructure from flooding and rising sea levels. And whereas the act would provide matching funds to achieve the goals of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Hudson River Estuary Program, a state program that has greatly benefited Hudson Valley communities, and whereas the act would fund shoreline management and restoration within the watersheds. Whereas, as an elected body tasked with protection and safeguarding irreplaceable water-connected resources and nature-based flood hazard mitigation measures that are essential to protect human life and infrastructure, and whereas this act would direct the Secretary of the Interior to enhance collaboration and coordinate restoration activities at all levels of government to protect fish and wildlife habitats, endangered species, improve water quality, increase public access to the estuary, mitigate flood risks, and develop public outreach and educational activities. And whereas many residents of the region of the New York, New Jersey watershed live in communities lacking environmental justice, where access to and enjoyment of fish, wildlife, clean water, and other natural resources have been impaired or compromised, federal funding is necessary to mitigate these long overdue environmental and social issues. And whereas the Village of Warwick would benefit from the act, as it would establish beneficial programs and award grants to help fund valuable restoration projects in our local community, and whereas the Village of Warwick is a cornerstone in which its residents depend on and the region relies on for its resources to provide prosperity throughout the state, therefore, the Village of Warwick must uphold its duty to protect the community's access to drinking water and natural resources. And whereas the Village of Warwick has an opportunity to be a social and environmental leader of the state by supporting the New York, New Jersey Watershed Protection Act, we may lead by example and facilitate much-needed change. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the village board supports the passing of the New York, New Jersey Watershed Protection Act. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the, oh, looks like we got a double, that the village, the Village of Warwick Board of Trustees hereby supports the passing of the New York, New Jersey Watershed Protection Act.
Second.
The congressman, I would just like to note that the Congressman Tonko, who's from the Schenectady area, is a graduate of Clarkson University.
Well, there you go.
By alma mater.
Yes, I know, so.
And I hope he's listening, knows how much we can use this money.
Yeah. You know, I just want to mention before we, we make this vote, though, too, is that I, it's, it's interesting to know that this little stream that goes through our village is connected to this incredible, these incredible water bodies. I mean, eventually, the water that goes through us ends up into the Hudson River, which then, you know.
Comes up into the harbor.
Harbor. And I always felt, and maybe this is an opportunity, as we try to educate the public, you know, so many people don't even know the name of the stream that goes through, through the village. And if we had wayfaring signage that could explain that, you know, this water is, you know, going through here, but it leads elsewhere, and the name of the stream and a little bit of the history, it would be really cool. So maybe that's a project we can work towards. It'd be cool. So, anyway, we have a second, and it's a roll call, though, I believe.
And I have, I have one more question, real quick. Do you know, is the, did they, do we know if the funding is going to come through the consolidated funding application?
No, this is federal, consolidated funding state.
Yeah, but I was wondering if it would come through the
Estuary program.
It should come through the state program. Oh, I can look into that.
I just sent you the, the, an email I got from Orange County Partnership on the consolidated funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I sent everybody. Okay.
Great.
Trustee Chaney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes. Okay, Tom, do you want to take Trustee Bachman's motion?
I have a motion to advertise for the position of summer office intern at a pay rate of $14 per hour, 20 hours per week, for approximately 12 weeks.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Carly?
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for a department picnic on Saturday, July 30, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Request includes use of alcohol, inflatable rides, restrooms, village-owned tables and chairs, completed park permit, and proper, proof of proper insurance, including host liquor liability and coverage for inflatable rides, have been received.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to grant permission to Boy Scout Troop 38 to use Railroad Green for a fundraiser plant sale on Saturday, May 7, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Park Avenue Elementary School to hold a third-grade picnic in Stanley Demming Park on June 9, 2022, with a rain date of June 10, 2022, from 12:15 PM to 2:30 PM. Completed park permit and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the budget modification and transfer request as per the village treasurer's letters dated April 28, 2022.
Second.
I do have a question
Sure.
about this. So the amounts are the same, right? We're just transferring from one count code to another?
Or multiple? Like in the water fund, we're transferring it from one distributing it to three other ones?
Okay, but the general fund is 124 over to 133.
Across the line, yep.
Okay. So every time we need to just transfer from one code to another, it's a?
It's a motion.
It's a motion, yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the Village of Warwick Summer Concert Series schedule for the attached calendar provided by Summer Concert Coordinator William Iarato.
Second.
I just want to mention that the, where the concerts are going to be is going to be up, you know, up to the scheduling of, you know, different groups, but the majority of the concerts will be back at Railroad Green, which many people have asked about. So we're very excited about that, and hopefully, things will be, will allow that to happen.
Oh, I do have some questions, because I, was that something that, like, a lot of folks wanted it to go back to Railroad Green?
Yes.
Because it seems like in Stanley Demming, there, but will, will some concerts be there?
Yes.
Because it seems like there's, like, more room, it's more kid-friendly.
Mm-hmm, with the playground and everything, yes, it is. But the, the other part of it being so close to all the activity downtown and
Oh, getting to eat and stuff.
Restaurants, and, yes, the people enjoyed that, too. So it's a mixed bag. So I think both places are great venues, so.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have a mix then, okay. All right, that's great to hear.
Okay, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Merchants Guild to hold their annual Pickers Paradise Sale on Main Street and Railroad Avenue on Saturday, July 9, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with setup to begin at 8:00 AM and breakdown complete by 6:00 PM. And on Saturday, Sunday, July 10, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with setup to begin at 8:00 AM. The breakdown will be complete by 4:00 PM. Completed facility use permit, proof of proper insurance, and security deposit have been received.
Second.
Okay.
I do have a question about this. So this is on Main Street and Railroad Ave, right? I believe, do we, do we close off Railroad Ave during that time, or traffic's so loud?
They requested it be closed off, that's a subsequent
That's the next motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So regarding that, who, who closes it off? Is it DPW? They put the
Yes.
the Sawhorses on?
They put this, well, the Sawhorses are there, you know, they're lightweight, if it's, it's a Sun, what day is it?
Saturday.
It's a Saturday and Sunday. We don't ask them to come in to specifically do that, the merchants do it.
So, okay, so is there a particular person in charge?
Ah, yes, Corinne Iarato.
Okay, so Corinne would move the?
Well, or some of the volunteers, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that when it's all done, it's not left up and
Oh, no, 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 it's definitely taken.
And we don't need to pay DPW overtime to come in and
To move a couple Sawhorses, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Merchants Guild to place no parking meter bags on the meters on Saturday, July 9, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and on Sunday, July 10, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, along Main Street as follows. Eddie's Roadhouse to Bank Street, G's Restaurant to Fetch Bar and Grill, Bertoni Gallery to Etched in Time, Be Free to Yesterday's, Aiken's Pharmacy to WVT for the benefit of the annual Pickers Paradise Sale. Pickup and return of no parking meter bags will be coordinated with the Village of Warwick DPW clerk.
Okay.
Second.
Quick question here.
Sure.
So do we have the, the parking enforcement officer working?
Yes.
During this time?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's part of her scheduled?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
And there's other places that she is, you know, besides on Main Street, so, you know.
Right, okay. So in, so in general, the, the shift kind of coalesces around scheduled times, such as the Pickers Paradise.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks. No more questions.
Okay. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to place no parking meter bags on the meters along Railroad Avenue on Saturday, July 9, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and Sunday, July 10, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 4:00 PM, for the benefit of the Warwick Merchant Guild's Pickers Paradise Sale. Pickup and return of no parking meter bags to be coordinated with the Village of Warwick DPW clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close Railroad Avenue on Saturday, July 9, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and on Sunday, July 10, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, for the benefit of the Warwick Merchant Guild Pickers Paradise Sale.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a couple of addendums. And Tom, do you want to take those both? They're, they're, both relate to each other.
Sure. I have a motion to enter into a vendor agreement for the New York State Low Income Household Water Assistance Program with the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
I just want to mention one thing. I mean, this has been, this is an important piece of legislation that came down from the state. It helps a lot of people out, especially now, post-COVID. There was a moratorium on, on people paying overdue water bills, and there was also, we did, there were no penalties at that period of time, but still, there were some people that just got behind, and so this is really helping them out. And so I'm, I'm really glad we can do it. But on the other end, within our departments, the Water Department and the Clerk's Office, it has been a monumental amount of work, and I, and I just want to shout out to them for the incredible work that they, they are doing, that they did and that they are doing to make this even possible. So just want people to know that. So we have
And the, and the idea is, for those who need the assistance, the state OTDA would pay the village
Right.
directly.
Right.
So we're not out the funds, but they are getting assistance through the state.
That's, well, it's, yes, to some degree, and also, what we're doing is creating a long, long, long-term payment plans for many of these people. So they're paying it, but it's just paid over a long period of time.
Okay.
And without any penalties.
Got it.
So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Finally, a motion to re-levy on the Village of Warwick 2022, 2023 tax bills, unpaid water and sewer fees, building inspector slash code enforcement department fees, and alarm
alarm fines to properties listed on the attached document, including errors and emissions of PTL 520 prorated taxes, as per the village assessor, with a total re-levy amount of $8,851.10.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it on motions. And so final comments from the board, and I want to say to Carly, who has some information, at the last meeting, we had before us a contractual agreement with Karen Arnn, who is landscape architect, who is going to, hopefully we're going to hire, to work on the, the, you know, review of the Memorial Park Comprehensive Master Plan. And in between that time, we've had, we had a really nice conversation with Karen. And so I'll, I'll give you the floor if you want to, just kind of get, keep people up to, up to snuff on what's been going on.
Sure. So we, we also talked last time about having a listening session to kind of kick off the Memorial Park Master Plan process. So we've settled on a date for that. That will be May 22nd, that's a Sunday, from 10 to 12. And so I think that'll be a really nice session, so folks can come at 10, we'll, we'll kind of gather, we'll go on a tour of the park together, and we'll return, we'll talk about the history of the park. The mayor actually has the plans from the 1920s for the park, which I think will be really nice for people to see and to kind of like think about the possibilities there. And so we'll talk about users for the park, and, and we'll have ways for people to provide both written and verbal feedback on sort of their vision, and that feedback will go directly toward the formation of the Master Plan Committee, as well as the Master Plan itself.
That's great. So I'm, I imagine, well, there's going to be a letter to the editor.
Yes.
And also probably a press release simultaneously, so we'll get some airing, so people will know about that. Just as a matter of the same subject, I had a meeting with some of the wayyonder kayakers who are looking for a docking site somewhere in Memorial Park, and they have a number of places that they're looking at, and I'm going to be walking it probably with Mike Moser, and I'll give you a call so you can come along and we can take a look at it together. So, but again, that's another use, I think, that five years ago, we didn't even anticipate. And so now we have kayakers, so it's great. Anybody else? Final comments?
I do have an update on the How Street Bridge.
Oh, yeah, great.
I think most people are aware that last Tuesday, they placed the bridge decking and railing pieces. Large crane in the village, hard to miss. They're now making permanent connections of the railings and the bridge decking and reconnecting the drainage systems and installing conduit and wiring for the, for the lighting on the bridge. And then this week and next, primarily concentrating on the sidewalk and curbing installation, and the following week, installation of paving and final grading. The expectation is that the, the bridge will be complete and open before Memorial Day weekend.
Not the Duck Derby.
Not the Duck Derby. He'll have to use the carriage pack.
I guess so.
How much paving will be associated with this? I mean, just of the bridge, or does it...
I'm not sure.
Smooth out into the parking lot, because we've had a lot of heavy machinery.
It's going to, it's going to smooth out, but I think probably from Main Street to the bridge will be done in its entirety. That's my expectation. I don't know that for a fact, I haven't asked that question. I will. And then from the, the other side of the bridge into where it's leveled off and would, you know, be an appropriate place to stop.
I was under the impression that most of it was, was going to be repaved, but we can talk to it.
I mean, it, it may be worth asking if they can pave from Main Street, right where the bridge starts, right?
Yeah.
To South Street, right, as one kind of continuous...
Swath, yeah.
Swath, I mean, it's, it's an extra...
They'd have to mill it.
It's an extra, what, 75 feet? Maybe?
I would say at least, but...
I would think that they would be milling the top portion, anyway.
Yeah, they're going to, they'll be in there.
So if they have the milling equipment, they might as well, you know, we'll talk to them. Of course, you, being a county legislator, you have so much, you know, you can...
I have their phone numbers, yes.
Is there an opportunity for us to discuss with them, you know, if they weren't so inclined to go all that way? They have all the equipment there, is there something that we could do to help offset going the rest of the way? Because I think when you start, it's a small road, right? It's a short road. So when you start and only do half of it, it'll seem a bit choppy living out to, to South Street.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd have to go down and look at the condition of the rest of it because that, you know, plays a role in whether it really is needed. So I don't think they'd be willing to do anything that isn't, you know, really needed, so...
But there was some disturbance of the road because of the utility work that was done on South Street and leading into, leading into Bank Street.
That's the responsibility of Orange and Rockland. That was a gas main project that Orange and Rockland replaced, and I've spoken to our DPW supervisor and asked him to contact Orange and Rockland and get them back in here and fix the spot where the gas line was replaced.
Right, right. Okay. Anybody else? We have to go into executive session, so if you have the sheet, that'd be great. Okay. Tom, if you want to, that's the motion that should be made, medical, financial.
I have a motion to go into executive session...
To discuss?
To discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal for a particular person or corporation.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for the public to know, when we come back to our regular session, we'll not be doing any more business, we will be closing the session right after that. Thank you. Thank you, Jen.